Item is ordinance, presentation, discussion, and potential action items. We have two items. One is consideration of resolution number three nine six zero approving public center of council member Adam Atkinson. City manager Marissa.
Thank you. So there is no staff recommendation on this item. This item was requested as a future agenda item by Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
Mr. Ramsey.
Okay, basically, thank you. Basically, we talked about this before when they were censoring, trying to censor Tanya. And nothing's changed since then, except for who's doing it now. So that's why I've run it up now and I, I put out the things that I thought were causing this again, and I stand by what I say. And I would like the, the lawyer, our lawyers to go ahead and read the proclamation so everybody has it right. Can you say?
Mario, if you could read that, please. Mario, are you available?
I don't know what happened to Mario, but I can read the resolution if that's what Mayor Pro Tim would like, so it's read into the record.
Okay, would you do that, please?
Sure. So it says, resolution number thirty nine sixty, a resolution of the city of Colinda approving public center of council member Adam Atkinson. Whereas the city council has determined that council member Adam Atkinson has, for reasons delineated below, enduring presentation and discussion of the item in an agenda based council meeting on April second, twenty twenty. And then it lists the following points. Engaged in conduct unbecoming of a city council member and engaged in conduct which has brought embarrassment and discredit to the city council. And the council wishes it known that the public center does not arise out of any good faith disagreement. By or councilman Atkinson on any matter as good faith disagreement and debate are expected, encouraged, and welcomed. And specific instances of council member Atkinson misconduct leading to this public center has included violations of the council code of conduct sections A, B, N, O, and C, C, as stated below. One, council code of conduct A, councilman Atkinson has not put constituents first by refusing to disclose documents pursuant to the California Public Records Act as demonstrated in exhibit two. Two, council code of conduct B, councilman Atkinson has not treat, treated the public with dignity, courtesy, and respect by posting comments on Facebook relating to members of the public contracting the novel coronavirus as demonstrated in exhibit three. Three, council code of conduct N, councilman, councilman Atkinson did not work to build trust by refusing to disclose documents pursuant to the California Public Records Act as demonstrated in exhibit two. Four, council code of conduct O, councilman Atkinson displayed inappropriate comments on social media by making comments relating to members of the public contracting the novel coronavirus as demonstrated in exhibit three. And five, council code of conduct C C, councilman Atkinson gave individual direction to the city manager as demonstrated in exhibit four. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council hereby finds, determines, and resolves follows. Section one. The city council hereby considers that the facts concerning council member Atkinson's conduct stated above constitute violations of the city of Colinda council rules and procedure particularly the following sections. Decorum of city council members. One, council member shall, A, put constituents first at all times, B, treat each other, staff in the public with dignity, courtesy, and respect, O, treat each other and everyone with courtesy, and refrain from inappropriate behavior and derogatory comments at all times, including but not limited to council meetings, social media, and public events. And continually work to build trust in each other. And C C, speak to the city manager directly on issues and concerns but not give individual direction. Section two, the city council of the city of Colinda thus hereby, one, publicly centers councilman Atkinson for engaging in the foregoing conduct which has caused undue disruption and loss of trust and confidence in him by the other city council members. And two, admonishes councilman Atkinson into cease engaging in such conduct or similar conduct in the future so that the council may regain trust and confidence in him going forward and thus allowing the council to perform its duty in the best interest of the public. Section three, this resolution shall be effective immediately after its passage and approval. Section four, certification, the city clerk shall certify to the passage and adoption of this resolution and enter it into the book of original resolutions passed and adopted by the city council of the city of Colinda, state of California, the second day of April twenty twenty by the following book.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is the city attorney. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I can hear you guys. Something must happen with my microphone. But we also have a public comment on this item from guest number ninety-three that hasn't been read. There have been some that were read already. But this is guest ninety-three and says, hi, I have to add something in regards to Mr. Atkinson, he being from my district. I disagree with him being censored.
Okay. Any others?
Also Nathan Rosberg would like to speak on item six point one, if possible.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Nathan, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so pretty much everything that you guys just read into record right there. I guess since we're going to get the city attorney's opinion on things, you were asked, but you weren't available. I would also ask that you read into the record and wonder if Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey was also in violation of those items when he called the public bullies and part of the peanut gallery back on, I think it was May sixteenth. And you know, here's my thing is that, you know, you guys are talking about losing the trust of the council. What about losing the trust of the people? People aren't trusting you guys. You guys are picking teams and fighting back and forth. Whoever has three votes wins. Everyone knows what's up. We have two people that are vowing for mayor right now. One is mayor and one wants to be mayor. So just so you know, we know this, the grand jury is going to know this. And so when you move to censure councilman Atkinson, just know that that information along with everything else is being turned over to the grand, sorted out. It's going to be election time and you guys are going to have to see what they have to say about that. And you know what? I bet you they're going to say that you guys broke the exact same rules that you're accusing Atkinson of. And I would play the video, it's on YouTube. It has lots of different views. People have, you know, listened to what Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey thinks about the people, bullies and peanut gallery. So, you know, it's kind of hypocritical to list these items from Atkinson at the same time doing it yourself. And so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
There is an additional comment, guest four twenty-eight. The comment is, this is Scott Netherton, owner of Real Time Entertainment. While I do not see eye to eye with a lot of things Adam says or does, I do absolutely believe he serves the community and does not deserve to be censured. This is disgraceful on every level and if you censure Adam, then you should censure you all. You are all in embarrassment at this point. And there are no further comments.
Okay, council? Any comments?
This is Tanya, I have a comment.
Okay.
So my situation was in the past and there was already a vote on it. So I think what happened a year ago should not be reflected in what's happening now. It's two separate cases, irregardless of who did or said what.
Any other comments, council?
Yeah, this, this is Ray, I have a comment. I still feel that Adam is definitely an asset. And Adam has, in my opinion, kept the public in point. And he's also shown in ways that questions that have answers, he gives them to the fullest. I mean, there's no doubt that he's a very intelligent young man. There's no doubt, but I think in type of situations, things get a little crazy when you deal with social media. But I, I still think he's a very, very big asset to what we do here as the city council.
Any others?
Well, obviously I have something to say, but I'll tell everyone else first.
Okay. Anybody else, please?
This is Ron, I just like to call for the vote.
Okay, but before we do that, Mr. Atkinson would like to speak. Adam?
Okay, so first of all, I want to talk to the people of Colinda and say that I did not, I do not want to be talking about this right now during the time of a national emergency. This wasn't something I wanted, this is something that was put upon me that I must address. I do not want to talk about this, but I'm forced to. I'd rather be talking about how to help the citizens of Colinda through this emergency. So first off, I think that the council, someone in the council are out of touch and we're talking about things that we shouldn't be talking about. There's no reason to be talking about a censure right now during these times. It should have been tabled and waited till after the emergency was over. However, here it is, so let me go. So first off, I'd like to address exhibit two. Mr. Ramsey, what was the complaint on exhibit two? You provided the complaint, so what is, what is the complaint about exhibit two? Tell me what you know about exhibit two.
Hold on, just a second. All the council people were supposed to turn in the documents that they had and then we were told that you didn't turn any out.
No, I, I turned in documents. Can you, can you tell me what I did turn in? I mean, I'm guessing you did some form of investigation, so tell me what you did.
I'll actually read the letter. I'll actually read the letter. As you know, our office represents the city of Colinda. This was from the, our lawyer, our, yeah, our lawyers. As you know, our office represents the city of Colinda and has received your email dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty wherein you requested records related to the incident at the Faith Fellowship Academy pertaining to the students living at school. We have worked with various departments of the city and are able to provide, provide documents pursuant pursuant to your request. Being stamped a, a big number. The city is aware councilman Atkinson is in possession of documents responsive to your request. However, he has refused to provide those documents to the city and is unable to obtain the documents without his cooperation. In addition, there are other documents where not related to, we are not releasing pursuant to California Government Code six five, six two five four F as they would impede an open criminal investigation. Please do not hesitate to contact our office or have any questions. Sincerely, Griswold South Cobb, down to Jim, L L P. And that was from Mario.
Right. So I'm guessing since you're, you're putting me up for censure, which is the highest level of review that city council can do on a council member, that you have investigated this in some way to know what documents I didn't turn in. So what I'm asking you is what documents did I not turn in?
I don't know. You didn't turn in any documents, according to this.
I did turn in documents. No, I did turn in documents. So I'm asking you, what documents did I not turn in?
I'm just going what I want, right now.
Okay, so you didn't even do your due diligence in trying to figure out what documents I did not turn in.
Well, I don't know what documents you have.
Who did you ask?
I wanted to find with you now.
Well, well, you're putting me up for censure, so of course I'm going to, I'm going to question this. That's, that's my right. I have a right to defend myself. So what did you do for your due diligence to figure out what I didn't turn in?
I asked my lawyer.
You asked your lawyer?
Yeah, the city lawyer.
You asked the city attorney? And what did, what did the city attorney tell you that I didn't turn in?
He said you were, it says, that you didn't turn it in. You didn't turn it in.
What didn't I turn in? I'm asking you, you brought this to the council for my censure. I'm asking you, what was your due diligence on what I did not turn in? Do you not have an answer for that? It's okay, say you don't have an answer. Say you don't know.
I don't know what you have.
Okay, so, so why are you adding this if you don't know what I didn't turn in?
Because it says you didn't turn in anything.
But you did not do your due diligence to figure out what I did not turn in.
How would I know until you turned it in?
You should have asked somebody. How do they know what I didn't turn in?
Mario, could I ask what documents are we talking about here?
Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the question is, can you repeat your question?
I brought this to the council. I have a clarification. I'm asking you, what was your due diligence?
Well, I don't know that we have a list, just that we were told that there were additional documents that weren't provided.
Okay.
Okay, so who has the list of documents that I didn't turn in? If no one else is doing their due diligence, I got to go around and figure out what I didn't turn in.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Is it, is it fair to say that we can strike this from the record?
This is Tanya and I have a comment. So as I read it, it says, the city is aware that councilman Atkinson is in possession of documents responsive to your request. However, he has refused to provide those documents and the city is unable to obtain the documents without his cooperation. My comment is, how do we know what you have if we don't know what you have? And we have a letter from the city attorney saying that he's aware, the city is aware that you do have possession of documents, but you're not turning them in. Now, did you sign the penalty of, did you sign the penalty of perjury? Or how does the city know that you have documents that you refuse to turn in?
That, so that I'm asking you, how does the city know that I?
No, I'm, I'm asking you that. You're the one that has the documents that haven't been turned in or allegedly have been turned in.
How do I have documents? I, I turned in documents. I, I can, we can go back and look and see what documents I turned in. So I'm asking you, not you, Tanya, I'm asking Ron Ramsey, he's the one who brought me before censure and he included this as an exhibit. What documents have I not turned in? You're supposed to do your due diligence to know, you're supposed to investigate on your own. You're, you're putting me up for censure and you're giving reasons. It sounds like you're just throwing the whole kitchen sink at me and hoping something sticks, which makes this personal. This isn't the first time you want me to be censored.
This is not personal.
I'm sorry, but how many times have you asked for me to be censored before?
Uh, this is the first time.
No, you, you said it at the last time.
No, I said, if, if she was going to be censored, you guys were doing the same thing.
And you asked for who else to be censored?
Just you.
Thank you. Tanya, did you have something?
Yeah, I just have another comment.
I only asked at this time.
So I think that we can argue on this till the cows come home. My, my comment slash question is directed to the city attorney. This letter was prepared by him and with his signature, he is stating that the city is aware the councilman Atkinson is in possession of documents, but he's refusing to turn them in. So I would redirect the question back to him, Mario, and ask, well, how are you aware and how do we know that Adam didn't turn in documents that he was asked to turn in? That, I don't believe that that is something that a single council person is going to know, even though hypothetically Pro Tim Ramsey could have asked the city or asked Adam, or anybody could have asked Adam. But if you're not going to produce them to the city, why would you produce them to any of us? So my question, Mario.
That I have no idea what, what exists. So how am I supposed to turn in documents that I don't know what you're talking about? So I'm, I'm asking, okay, Mario, since it, I guess, well, it has Megan Dog's signature on it, but I'm guessing you have documents that didn't turn in.
So, um, I'll answer the question because this letter has nothing to do with the censure at the time that it was written. This letter was sent to the city who requested public records. And so the language in the letter was drafted by the city attorney's office by my request because we needed to provide the documents to an individual who had requested them. So the letter was written to best protect the city as best as we can. It was never written as a method to be included in the censure. That letter was written that way because the documents that we received from councilman Atkinson were in relation to any conversation he had with city people regarding the matter of the public records request, the public records request pertaining to. But we did not receive documents responsive, all documents responsive as far as anything, any communication he had with anyone outside of the city.
Is there a certain person in mind that you're asking, that you're talking about? You can go ahead and say it, I know what you're talking about.
Well, the, let, the request had to do with all city councils, text messages, emails, Facebook messages, something to that effect relating to the incident with faith Christians. So what we received were the items, you did provide documents and it was in response to anything that you had having to do with the city. So if there were documents with other individuals that didn't work for the city, that is what we didn't receive. And I know we had a conversation about it and we needed to include that because if the city was found that we were withholding information, then the city could be liable. And so that's why that statement was in there. It wasn't at the time that it was written, there was no talks of a censure, there was no plan to include it in the censure by the city. It was because we needed to respond to an individual and provide all the documents we had, knowing that you had stated you had a few other documents, but they, they weren't with city individuals and so you didn't want to provide those for the request. So it was not an intent for the censure.
All right, so let me clarify that. I didn't say I had other documents. I asked you if communication between myself and my wife were included in this. Did I not?
That was part of what you asked me of.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Ramsey, do you believe that you have entitlement to, to any discussions between my wife and I?
No, I don't.
Okay, so can we strike this one from the record?
No, I think, I, there, there could have been other stuff in there.
That is not, that's not, the conversation between me and the city manager was.
Can you prove, that there wasn't anything else in there? I would like to, you know, just to go, would you mind giving your phone to somebody and letting them go through it?
Sure, you, you want my wife here to read the message?
No, no, not your wife at all, just you.
Okay, well, that's who we're talking about. That's what I said to the, to the city manager. I said, are any conversations between my wife and I, do they need to be turned in? And she said, yes. And I said, well, if you want conversations between my wife and I, you better go get a court order. I never said I had conversations between my wife and I. I just said, if. But let me move on, on this exhibit to the court cases and tell you what the court has found. And by the way, where was the, is there a complaint from the person who requested these
I have no idea.
That there isn't. So the only person complaining is Mr. Ramsey. So let me move on. I, I don't know why, if there was no complaint from the person who requested this, why you have to complain about it? So can I conduct city business with my wife, Mr. Ramsey?
If you have city business with your wife? I don't care what it is.
Can I conduct city business with my wife?
Can you conduct city business with your wife?
Yes.
What kind of a, I don't understand the question.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. Can I conduct city business with my wife? My wife is in the work of the city. So how can I conduct city business with my wife? How are you entitled to conversations between my wife and I? Further, the court has ruled to qualify the public record under the CPRA at a minimum, a writing must relate in some way to the public's business. Now, of course, my wife and I had conversations back and forth about faith Christians, our kids weren't there. But does that mean you're entitled to those conversations?
Did you have any conversations with anybody else? That you didn't turn?
I, I, every conversation that I had has been turned in.
Pardon me? You have?
This is your, this is your censure. If you have evidence otherwise, you should have included it.
No, I, no, I just asking you, do you have?
And I'm telling you, no, I don't have anything else. I turned everything in that I had. And let me, let me move on to the other court case, city of San Jose versus Superior Court, two thousand seventeen. At the first element, the court reached out, the court reached, all already commonly understood the conclusion that emails, text messages, and other electronic platforms are writings under the CPRA. The second element raised more difficult issues because the court noted, the overall structure of the CPRA with its many exemptions makes clear that not everything written by a public employee is subject to review and disclosure. After reciting examples of writings that would likely not be a public record, such as an email to a spouse complaining my coworker is an idiot, the court clarified that a qual, that to qualify the public record under the CPRA, a writing must relate in some substantive way to the conduct of the public's business. Though this standard is broad, it is not so elastic as to include every piece of information the public may find interesting. Communications that are primarily personal, containing no more than incidental mentions of agency business generally will not constitute public record. So I ask again, can we strike this from the record?
I have another comment, this is Tanya. So I read through the public records request and I see text messages between yourself and the city manager, but they don't match up. It seems though on your end, some of that communication is, was not submitted regarding the faith Christian situation.
But you, I, I don't understand. You see text messages, but they're not all there, is that what you're saying?
Um, well, yeah, if you're.
You're sending us emails. I'm guessing what you're talking about is emails.
No, I'm, I'm talking about text message.
Well, then you, I, I've never deleted text messages between myself and the city manager, so they should all be there.
Okay.
I, I do delete my city emails because they add up. So if there was emails in there, then I'm sorry, I deleted them, but I, I turned in everything that I have.
So those just are not there, you don't know why?
The what? The text messages?
Uh huh.
I don't know, I'd have to go back and look. They're not, they're not included in this, so I, I can't, can't say. All, all I see is in exhibit, is exhibit two with the, with the letter from the attorney. So I'm asking, Mr. Ramsey, did you do his due diligence and, and look into this?
That's why we hire our lawyers. That's, I stand by my, I stand by what I say.
So Mario, if I say to my wife, I'm on my way to faith Christians to talk to somebody.
Oh, what?
Yeah, anyway, if I say to my wife, yeah, I'm on the faith, way to faith Christians to talk to Tara, do I? to talk to Tara," do I have to turn that in?
Uh, typically, that kind of conversation, no, you would not.
Okay. So you, that's, okay, so why are we including this? Because now it seems personal, Mr. Ramsey. Exactly what I've been saying, this is personal. If you can't look at this and say, "We should..."
How do we know that there's not, how do we know?
How do I know that you haven't turned anything in? I can say the same thing to you. If you make a claim toward me, I can also make the claim toward you.
Okay.
How do we know? We, we can, we can play with hypotheticals all day long.
I stand by what I go. I call for the vote.
Okay, so I, you can't call for the vote, I'm not done. I'm asking you, what is it that I didn't turn in? And you're telling me, "I have no idea." So you're, you're asking me to be censured on an item that you have no idea. This is discrimination. This is personal, and I will take action after this.
I go with what our lawyers tell us. Thank you very much.
I, we, we, we heard you already say that. I'm asking you, this is your censure. You asked me on this, so answer the question. What haven't I turned in? If your answer is, "I don't know," then why am I being censored for something you don't know about?
Because I don't know until you turn it in.
I don't have anything to turn in. That's what I already told you. I just asked the, the city, the city attorney, if I told my wife in the text messages that I'm on my way to faith Christian to talk to Tara, does that have to be turned in? And what did you say?
He said no.
Okay, then. So what am I violating?
Do you have any other, do you have any other, to other people?
Yeah, and do I have any what?
Do you have any texts to other people, talking about this?
You're speculating, this is true speculation on your part.
So are you.
No, I'm not speculating.
Speculate all we want.
You're, you're speculating that I have information to which you have no proof, you're offering no proof whatsoever, that I have information in my phone that I did not turn in. When I'm telling you, my comment with the city manager was specific to my wife. That is why this is in the letter. I'm telling you right now, the conversation I had with the city manager had exactly to do with my wife. If you want to go to court, take me to court, so you can look at the messages between my wife and I. And then you'll see that there was nothing I shouldn't have turned in. So this letter was written because I told the city manager, "If you want conversations between my wife and I, you need to take me to court." That is why this is in there. I never said I had anything between my wife and I. I just said, "If the city ever wants conversations between my wife and I, they will have to take me to court." But you're still unwilling to strike this from the record?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'll make sure this goes somewhere else too. Okay, so let's move on. What's next? Exhibit three, please tell me about exhibit three.
I stand by my exhibits, just to read them, and that's what they go for.
Well, you're the one who turned it in, so I need to know what it was about that made you want it.
Just look at it, and then I'll tell you.
No, you're the one who turned in the censure.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to respond.
You turned in the censure. This is your baby, own it. This is what you wanted. We are, we are doing this right now because of you. So please tell me, in exhibit three, what it is that you don't like, that you think I should be censored for. I can't just look at it and say, "Oh, you want to be censored for this, this is your thing."
Okay, how about having people die?
Having people die?
Right.
So I didn't say I wanted people to die.
I have a few people I can think of. I hope that it's in that number.
Okay. So that's something I should be censored for?
Well, we, you want people to die when we are in the past.
I, I didn't say I wanted people to die. I, I think have people that are in that number. First of all, I have a sense of humor, some, something that you may not have, but I, I like to, I...
Well, when people die, I don't have...
In fact, no, no.
When people are dying.
No, no, I'm dying, no, I'm dying.
Because all that does is create panic.
That's what I should be censored for. The same day that you questioned, or that they're saying that I caused panic, I went outside, I went to the store, I didn't see anybody panicking. I went to the city, I didn't see anybody panicking. I went to Rite Aid to pick up a prescription, nobody there was panicking. So who were these people that were panicking?
There's people in the exhibit that, that tell you that you shouldn't say that.
Oh, well, people say I shouldn't say that? So everything that I go on from now on has to do with people who say I shouldn't say this or that?
So you, you feel that you can, I, you can, you feel that you can say anything you want, and you're representing the city? You do a lot of stuff for the city, but you do a lot of bad, that make it look bad, too.
No, I don't, I, I don't answer to you, I answer to the voters. I, I wish you would understand. So, yes, I, I made a joke about someone, I, I do have a sense of humor, you've all known that. When I got on council, even before I got on council, what would I say? I told the people, the people that voted for me before they voted for me, that I am who I am. I'm not a politician. I was never supposed to be in a position like this. I have never lived a life as a politician. I am who I am, and I'm not going to change for nobody. I'm not going to change for you, the mayor, or anybody else on council, whether you want to censor me or not. I will joke when I want to joke. And to be honest, I went to my grandfather's funeral last week, and I joked around because my grandmother died before him, and I said, "God had to take my grandfather because my grandmother was creating hell in heaven." I'm joking. My grandmother's not really creating hell in heaven, I just like to joke about that. That's how I keep it light. And to be honest, is that really that bad of a thing?
I stand by what I say.
Yeah, I heard you say that, but you're not explaining yourself. Okay, next exhibit. Go for it. Mr. Ramsey, what is the next one bother you?
Exhibit four?
It's the page right under, right after.
Well, thank you for telling me that. Are you kidding again, huh? Okay. Okay. Okay, you're, you're, you're asking, uh, the mayor and the mayor pro tem to call an emergency meeting?
No, I'm sorry.
I haven't heard, I haven't asked, I haven't heard from you at all. Today is the first time I've talked to you since, since you've done this.
Wait, I'm not talking about that, we're, you're, you're going ahead, go back to the one.
That's on exhibit four.
I think this will, we're still part of, on exhibit three, I got to explain every, every, um, item that you turned in for exhibit three.
Okay, which one are you pertaining to?
So we just, we just got done talking about the first one, so now we're talking about the second, the second one, the second screenshot.
Okay, I, I stand by what I say on all of them, I'm sorry, I'm not going to go to each one of these. It's here, the council can look at it, and they can make their own decisions.
Well, how can I defend myself?
That's all I'm going to say. I'm stopping now.
How can I defend myself? How can I defend myself on a censure if you're not going to explain what it is in each one that you think I need to be censored for? These are what you turned in, this, we're here because you asked for me to be censored. I'm asking you, what is each one, so I know what you're talking about and I can defend myself?
Mayor, I called for the vote.
You, you turned these in, how am I supposed to defend myself if that's not?
Okay, council, where do you want to go? On this?
Okay, when, when Tanya was up for censure, you let her speak, and you let her attack me the whole time. And submit packets that had nothing to do with censure. It made it look like I was on trial. And mayor, you allowed that, and that's fine, it's your meeting. I should also be allowed to defend myself.
And I am doing that right, Adam, I am doing that right as we speak.
I know you are, I know you are, but I'm saying, I should still be allowed to defend myself. It's your, it's your meeting, and you, you're the boss here. I might be able to defend myself.
Okay, council, are you agreeable to this? Continue.
This is Tanya's comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So, uh, my comment is, Adam keeps asking, uh, Ron to explain himself, which I understand him asking that, but I also understand from Ron's, uh, perspective, saying that it's all included, because if, uh, one were to read the resolution, it clearly states right there what the issues are and refers to the exhibit. So I personally don't feel that Ron needs to justify it, I think that he already did when he did this. Um, and if, I would, I would like to respectfully ask, in your, and Adam, in your addressing Ron and asking him this stuff, please don't be condescending to him when you're asking these questions.
Well, uh, uh, okay, fair, fair enough.
That's another violation with how you're treating a fellow council member.
Okay. So I'm trying to figure out what in the next screenshot that Mr. Ram, Mayor Pro Tem Ramsey provided, what it was in that screenshot that violated anything? That, that not just violated something, but, but made it in a way that I should be censored. I'm, I'm guessing, I don't know, I'm looking right here, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, is it because I said shut up? Okay, so I, I move to table this, since the mayor pro tem doesn't want to say why he, I should be censored, why are we still talking about this? He has to, he's got the burden of proof, not me.
I have the burden of proof, it says it exactly in the pa, uh, in the paperwork.
And you should be explaining what it is. I've read the paperwork, but it does not give examples within the paperwork.
I stand by what I go.
This is Tanya again, in reading the resolution, I'm not quite sure exactly where we are in the exhibit, but under five, or four now, it's one, two, three, four, five, they're clearly stated right there with what the po, what he feels the problem is with the exhibit. So I guess I'm not understanding what you're not understanding.
So he listed problems, right? But he did not list where in the exhibit that the problem exists.
Well, in, okay, Adam, you're a smart guy, I would say, if you can, that may have caused this by what you've said, joking or not, so come on, be a smart guy and read it, and try to put the shoe on the other foot as to how and why he may feel, he feels that he submitted that as an example.
But, but when I, when we called for your censure, I was very clear on why, why that had to be done. I provided documentation, I talked about the documentation. I'm not asking from the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, he's got the burden of proof here. He needs to prove to you why I need to be censored, not just, "I stand by my whatever." Standing by it doesn't mean anything.
Well, I've read the resolution, and I've read the code of conduct, and I've looked at all his exhibits.
Mm-hmm.
So I...
Okay, so, I want to be able to defend myself with each screenshot, right? I, I think that's fair.
Right.
And I want to be able to defend myself, but in order for me to defend myself, I need to know exactly what it is that the mayor pro tem found so offensive that I should be censored. The, the, the order, or the resolution, sure, it lists things, but it does not list examples on each, on each item in the resolution. All it does is just say, "Because of a violation of this." But it doesn't say what in there violates it.
Okay, so I have another interjection here. So if I may, I believe that it was, uh, the person sends in the documentation to the city attorney, and it's their job to write the resolution.
If, if I remember correctly. Okay, if I'm... On the one side, I'll, I'll go ahead and start again. Adam, if, if that's okay. Okay. On where we, where we are right now, it says, on that last one, Councilman Atkins did not treat the public with dignity, courtesy, or respect, posting comments on Facebook relating to members of the public, uh, contacting, uh, contracting the novel virus as demonstrated in three.
Okay, that's the one we just talked about earlier.
Okay, yeah. Okay, number three, council, uh, code, Councilman Atkins did not work to build trust by refusing to disclose the con, the documents, uh, to the Public Record Act as demonstrated in, uh, number two. Okay, number four, Council Code of Conduct, Councilman Atkins displayed inappropriate comments on social media, uh, comments relating to members of the public about the no, the uh, nervous virus, demonstrated in three, and Council Code, uh, Atkins gave individual direction to the city manager as in exhibit number four. That is all the questions, right there.
In exhibit three, you provided one, two, three, four, five. But in exhibit three, you provided five pieces of documentation. Each piece of documentation, you alleged that I violated the code of conduct, so I'm asking you, we're going to go through them one by one, and you can tell me where I violated the code of conduct.
Okay, which ones are we on now, yeah? Go ahead.
Exhibit three.
Okay. Okay. Basically, I have a few people I could think, okay, that's the joke, but that's where you, uh, made the, uh, you know, I have a few people I can think of that I hope is in that number. And you were, uh, this other gentleman was talking about individuals just outside the, hopefully that's two hundred and forty-five just outside the, the cit, the town. I know you guys were joking, but still, you don't joke about this kind of stuff when you're on the council.
Well, according to who?
According to pe, I don't think people would like you to talk about people out, dying right outside of town.
Who complained?
Because there's, there's going to be a lot of people that probably are dying out this two blocks.
Who, who complained?
Who complained? Robert Burnett.
Okay, so there was one person who complained, anybody else?
I complained.
One person, no.
Obviously, you're going to complain.
Well, I don't think that you need to be talking about deaths in the city and wishing people would die.
Well, there's, there's a lot of things that you don't, you don't need to be talking about my wife and kids, but the council saying the things, that was okay.
Okay, we're not going back a year, but I got the information from your wife.
Alright, okay. There you are, going back a year. Anyway, so the next one, the next one is, you're saying, "You shut up," and I'm guessing you thought, think that because I, I, someone told me to shut up, and I returned a favor and told them to shut up, that you think I should be censored for that?
I didn't create any panic.
I'm sorry?
Okay, I'm looking at that right now. That was just part of that, that whole group right there. I had to do it in two, two pieces because that was the whole thing.
Okay, so can we strike that from the record? Since this doesn't have anything to do with what you're...
It's part of the top, it's part of the top.
Well, what, what in this screenshot is violation?
Treating people with respect.
Because I said shut up, when someone told me to shut up? Mr. Ramsey?
I'll go to the next one.
Well, I'm asking you, is that what, is that the sentence?
I'm telling you, I don't want to strike you anything, Adam. I'm not going to strike you anymore.
Okay. Can I ask you, where, where did you get this screenshot?
And I already read you what, what you wrote, I'm sorry, I'm...
Where, where did you get this screenshot? Where did you get this screenshot?
Well, do you think I got them off of the, uh, the computers?
Who sent them to you?
Some of them I got off of other people's sites. You can go to any site you want and make these screenshots.
Well, you can see exactly who sent them to you.
On all of them?
Yes. It's in the bottom right corner.
Okay.
Who's there?
Okay. I, I just looked at his screenshots, I... Okay. I I just looked at his screenshots, and I got some of those.
That that he sent to you. So now you're taking orders from Greg Cody, the person that I have in a restraining order against. This person has an un- an obsession towards me that you're feeding and putting me in more danger by feeding into him. You should be censured for talking about me to him. There's a reason why I have a restraining order. There's a reason why it does agree with me on that. And you're putting me in danger by feeding him who has an unhealthy obsession toward me, who posts about me almost daily. Moving on. So there's one with Sheila Todd. And she put, "Get you are leaving City Kalinga to our new home in Arizona. There will be other families following also." And I said, "Praise the Lord." I'm guessing that's why you put that on there, because I said, "Praise the Lord."
Yeah.
Okay. So, praise the Lord. Right. So what you didn't put on is what was just a little bit earlier. Says, yes, Sheila Todd, and I'm quoting. She's talking to somebody else. You would be perfect. And if anybody wants to take their, um, you but not, and you want to laugh at this, I totally allow you to laugh at this because she did a good job. You are far, you are way far more better looking than that bald pencil-necked weirdo that's sitting in that chair. Better personality, and especially you are much more of a liar, where Atkins isn't a man at all. Just wishful thinking on his part. Thank you. He supposedly knows martial arts and claims to be a bounty hunter. Really? Too funny. And he's afraid of a physically disabled senior citizen who is on oxygen and can barely stand, let alone walk. Way too funny. Atkins is nothing but a freak of nature. Some- someone should have aborted him from his whatever it was that created him. So she talks about me like that, fine. She says she's moving, and I say, "Praise the Lord." Is that really something I should be censured over?
Well, see.
Yeah, I've heard I've heard more worse from you guys.
Are you done now?
No, I'm on exhibit four now. Okay, so go ahead with exhibit four.
Okay, minute you've been asking for a response, that's what you're talking about. Okay.
Where did I say that I talked to you, the mayor pro tem?
Okay, I have I have called on the mayor to hold an emergency council meeting. Only the mayor or Mayor Pro Tem may call once. Did you ask, uh, ask the mayor to do it?
I did. And if I talked to you, that would be a violation of the Brown Act, wouldn't it?
Okay.
So how did I don't understand?
Okay, how about how about telling the manager?
For an agenda item? Yeah, I did.
No, what did he say about agenda item?
I know specifically, what do you think? What do you think you're doing to the city manager when you ask him to make an agenda item? Hello?
I'm looking.
I think you got that from Greg Cody. You just ran with it. You're following orders from Greg Cody, and that's the same. I see him in every single screenshot you put in. You're putting me in danger by doing that.
Where's he at in that screenshot? Where's he at?
Oh, in that one? Okay, so you expect that he's in the other ones, though, right?
No, some of them, yes.
Okay, then. So you're feeding into his obsession.
No.
So this is I this is Tanya. I have a comment, and I'm not defending Greg. I'm just saying, in my opinion, it doesn't matter where the screenshots came from, if they came from Greg or Joe Blow. It's Ramsey's perception as to what he wants to do.
It, in my opinion, it does matter because his whole life revolves around taking me down. There's a reason why there's restraining orders.
Why? Why do I want?
And when the mayor pro tem feeds into his obsession toward me, that puts me in danger.
So I would ask the mayor pro tem, have you communicated back to Greg, or is it one side of communication? I mean, do you feel that you're being forced to do this?
I don't communicate with Greg.
There you go.
I don't. You can look at my-
Again, it's in it's in the evidence that the mayor pro tem turned in. So anyways, why is exhibit four in in this at all?
I might look.
You know that this was safe?
I look at stuff that you do.
This was shared by several city council members throughout the valley. They said that I did a good job with that. Nobody ever said that it sounded like I was speaking for the council. Do you know that the vice mayor in several towns shared this?
No, I don't.
Do you know that they send me messages saying, "Good job"? That's one of the best ones we've ever seen. So why is this on here?
It's my perception.
Your perception. So I'm being punished because of your perception.
You haven't been punished yet. And and all the hey, if all it all it says for you is on the punishment, have you read the punishment?
I'm not interested in the punishment. I'm interested in being censured.
Yes, hey, you know what the punishment is? It just says, "Don't do that." That's all the punishments there is.
I I don't care.
You have to prove your case.
This is the highest level.
With the code of conduct.
This is you. You have let the code of conduct fly. You have called for my censure twice. This is personal, and I don't want to be talking about this. I'm forced to be talking about it. We have a huge problem going on, and this is what we are talking about. This should have been tabled and waited till after the emergency, but you wanted to continue to move forward with it because you have a vendetta against me.
I don't have a vendetta against you.
You can't even tell me. You can't even tell me why half of these are on here.
They speak for themselves.
They do not. Then if they speak for themselves, you should have no problem explaining it. You're saying your perception of this has to do with what?
I'm dead.
Yeah, exactly. If you can't explain it to them, then you 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 go and hide. Explain it. This is your baby. You should be able to. You got the burden of proof here, not me. You are hiding. You keep saying you're done. You keep saying, "I'm not gonna go on with this." I hate talking about this when we have all this stuff going on in Kalinga, and this is what we're doing.
Stop talking about it and let's go for the vote.
No, imagine if you put as much time and effort into coming after me as you should put into Kalinga. Tanya, I guess you had some possession.
You don't know half the stuff I've done for Kalinga. Tanya, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. When I read, uh, Adam's post where he addresses the citizens, um, I read, "I'm directing the city manager to look into options for city-funded low-to-no interest small business loans." So when I read that, I read that you are directing her to do that. It's not an agenda request item. It's not pay this or that. You clearly say, "I am directing."
And was it on this? Was it on this agenda?
Yeah, it's your wording when you address the public.
You're gonna go on with words.
You cannot direct the city manager to do anything. It takes all of council and a majority vote.
What do you think we do when we ask the city manager to come up with an agenda item?
Well, you know what? When I do it, I say, "I would like to request an agenda item," and then I say what I'm requesting.
Okay, well, that may be a nice way of saying it, but what we are doing is directing her to make put an agenda item on the council, on the agenda, I mean.
A word.
You cannot do-
This is semantics. We're talking about semantics now. So I offer myself up for censure. I've let all of Kalinga know what's going on here. And let me just give you my closing statement. First of all, I want to apologize to the citizens of Kalinga for having to deal with this nonsense. This should have never happened. We are in the middle of an emergency here, and this is what we are dealing with. If council would put this much time and effort into Kalinga instead of worrying about me, we would get so much farther. These circumstances aren't going to determine if I will be successful or not in this council. My mindset will be what determines my success. There is no enemy within me, so the enemy outside of me can do me harm. I've made the decision that I ain't giving up. I'm not giving in. I will do whatever it takes to be successful, and I will do whatever it takes to make Kalinga successful. I do not come here to be mediocre. I do not come here to fall in line with the rest of council. I do not go where the path may lead, but I go where there is no path and leave a trail. This is absolutely personal, and I've proved that beyond the shadow of a doubt, and the rest of Kalinga will see this as well. Another problem we have here, and why I think it's so important that we, the people vote on mayor, is we create these alliances. Why? These alliances help you shift these into the mayor and mayor pro tem fees. It is the council who determines the mayor and mayor pro tem, not the people. The people should be deciding who the mayor and ma- who the mayor is at the very least. This is why we have these issues. We have a mayor pro tem now who says, "I'm not answering anymore." And he says, "I'm just gonna run away," and he can't, he can't tell us why I need to be censured. We have let the people down. We are letting the people down right now. You need to look to yourself in the mirror and say, "You let them down. You let the people of Kalinga down." And I want to tell you, the people, and no disrespect to anybody on council, I don't care about the mayor or mayor pro tem. I don't care to come here and do what I do for them. I do it for the people. I don't need the mayor to give me a pat on the back or some kind of positive affirmation. I care more about Kalinga than I care what the council thinks of me. I could care less what the council thinks of me. I was voted in by the people. I was not voted in by the council. I have standards and values that I will live by in this council and while I'm on council. I chose to do this. And I'm not give the people of Kalinga any less because of a threat of censure or because they don't like me. Why? Because I value Kalinga enough to give a hundred and twenty percent or not do it at all. And that's the problem with some of you. You always want to blame other people and hold other people to the fire, but not hold yourself to the fire. For instance, we have a council member who has a recall Addison sign in their yard until just the other week. I don't care. I could care less what you say about me, but it is a violation of the code of conduct. Who cares? That seems to be just fine with all of you. You owe Kalinga an explanation. Look, get yourself and ask you why you're only giving fifty percent or less. You need to put yourself on censure. You need to tell you, "No more cake and cookies. We need to stop talking about cake and cookies. We have an emergency to deal with." You need to quit pointing fingers at others and start pointing them right back at yourself. What are you not doing for Kalinga? So I offer myself up for censure. Go ahead and go along with the vote.
This is Tanya. I have a comment about the sign. That was my neighbors, and when they moved, the sign disappeared. It was not in my yard. You're more than welcome to check the property line.
It was in your yard. It was on Greg's car for a very long time. Then it was in your yard. Then it moved just slightly beyond the property line. It's a nice try. So let's get this over with. Let's give you the vote.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. So we have, um, do we have a motion for consideration of resolution number three nine six zero approving public censure of council member Adam Atkinson? What happened? I'll ask again. Do we have a motion for consideration of resolution number thirty-nine sixty approving public censure of council member Adam Atkinson?
Is Ron Ramsey there?
Yes, I'm here.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I repeat, do we have a second? Consideration of resolution number thirty-nine sixty has failed for lack of a second on approving the public censure of council member Adam Atkinson.